Finance Budget Report. Administration will update the board on the budget. This item provides an opportunity for the board's information and discussion.
Thank you.
As she's coming, this was kind of a last minute ad. And it was because of all of the attention that has been placed on the post audit, legislative audit, and concerns of what people are spending, school districts are spending at-risk dollars on. So we thought it was to our advantage to share with our board members, as you already know, what we've spent our dollars on. But just to remind you of the dollars that you've spent for at-risk and where you've spent them, and just a little bit more information about that post audit that we would like to do some clarifying and some making sure you all are on the same page.
Welcome, Susan.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Hedrick, Dr. Thompson, members of the board. As Dr. Thompson indicated, we actually are going to go ahead and kick off our fiscal year 21 budget development reporting season one month early. So here we are on January 13th with our presentation kickoff, with our ultimate goal being budget adoption by August 24th, 2020. And that actually puts us a day ahead of our August 25th deadline, so the calendar works out well at this time. We do a short happy dance and then we start planning for fiscal year 22.
Love the graphics.
Yes. So, we want to talk a little bit tonight about the focus on at-risk in the legislature, particularly as we had our opening day today to kick off the 2020 legislative session. The two issues that we need to talk about tonight concern high-density at-risk and then the legislative post-audit results on at-risk expenditures. So, starting with high-density at-risk, there are two components to at-risk funding. There is the at-risk weighting that every district across Kansas receives, which is based on their free lunch headcount. Then, certain districts can receive additional at-risk weighting, called high-density at-risk weighting, if they qualify under three separate measures. The first measure is if you are at 50% or more of a free lunch headcount, you receive high-density at-risk. That's how Wichita qualifies, is because our free lunch headcount is in the mid-60s as far as a percentage. So we qualify for high-density at-risk weighting. If a school district is at least 35%, but less than 50%, there is a slightly different calculation for those districts. And then, if a district is below 35%, but an individual school within that district has higher than 35%, that school can qualify for high-density at-risk weighting. So, for the 2018-19 school year, 188 schools received high-density at-risk funding totaling $51 million. For that fiscal year, our share of that funding was 14.3 million. We are budgeted slightly more than 15 million for the fiscal year 20, school year. There are two particular paragraphs in the state statute concerning high-density funding that we need to pay attention to tonight. The first one is paragraph four. This language was added in 2018, which requires funds to be spent on best practices, or districts need to show improved assessments in a five-year period following a notification that you're not performing, or you risk losing these high-density at-risk funds. Paragraph five almost seems to contradict paragraph four, because there is a sunset date on this statute, which was amended in 18 to put it out to 2019, but was not amended in 19. So right now, this statute is set to expire July 1st of 2020. And what that means for school districts receiving this funding is the loss of that funding. For us, based on the 18-19 funding, we would lose $14.3 million. As I said earlier, we are actually budgeted for more than that for fiscal year 20. So this is of considerable concern for us. That is a significant amount of money. It is more money than we're receiving in new funding. So we would be in a deficit position, and we would be looking at having to have reductions in spending if we receive this kind of reduction in funding. So we have been working kind of behind the scenes for quite a while now with our legislative group, approaching it as a technical fix, because again, why would you have a five-year requirement if you really meant to eliminate this as a funding possibility? We have met with several of our legislators to educate them on the importance of this funding and what this funding is currently doing for us, which we're going to cover here in just a few minutes. We've shared with local leaders and advocates the consequences of this sunset, and so several of them have added this to their legislative agendas in support of keeping this funding in place. The important part to note is, this funding is in the governor's budget. This doesn't require a tax increase, it doesn't require a cut somewhere else in the state budget. It's already in the budget, so it's there. We just need that sunset language removed. So we need to get this information into as many hands as possible, which is certainly why we wanted to share it with the board tonight, and certainly anyone watching. We have had some early discussions with the UTW leadership to get this into the hands of our teachers as well. So that's high-density at-risk. The other piece of at-risk concern is the legislative post-audit report. So as part of the 2018 enhancements to the school finance formula, several audits were required. One of the early ones, if you recall, was transportation. At-risk came next, and then we're scheduled for bilingual and unencumbered cash balances coming up. So this particular audit on at-risk, the audit objectives were to answer three questions. The first one, how does the method Kansas uses to count the number of at-risk students in a district compare to other methods? So in our case, at-risk funding is based on free lunch headcount. How do other districts across the nation look at at-risk? How does the funding school districts receive through at-risk and high-density at-risk student weightings compare to what districts spend to provide services to those students? And has at-risk funding been calculated in accordance with state law, and how do districts spend that funding? So a few comments on the legislative post-audit process and their findings. Twenty out of 286 schools were reviewed. Legislative post-audit pulled an audit sample, not random, of $5.1 million out of $162 million to look for appropriate use of funds. Meaning, they took the general ledgers of all 20 school districts and went specifically through the line-item descriptions to look for items of interest that they wanted to examine. So you can't take those results that they found and project them onto the total population, because it wasn't a random audit. That wasn't their intent. They were very specific about it when they were pulling the sample. But it's important to note that any findings that they had cannot be projected onto the group, because it's not a random sampling process like other audits you would experience. So what they did find is that, of the districts they reviewed, those districts received $125 million in at-risk funding, but they spent $162 million to provide at-risk services. So, for the most part, the majority of the districts spent more on at-risk services for their students than they received in funding, and we'll cover our specifics here in a minute. $156 million of the $162 million at those districts was spent for staff salaries and benefits. 91% were classroom teachers or parents. Nineteen out of the 20 districts pay for classroom teachers out of at-risk funding. They did find 191,000 of what they consider to be questionable expenses. Again, as a percentage of the $5.1 million, that's around three and change, almost 4%. But again, you can't take that and say, "Well, then there's 4% error rate on the 162 million." That's not the case. That 191,000, based on the fact that they looked for descriptions, might be the only errors in that account. And if that's the case, that's a pretty efficient way to look at the spending. If $191,000 was maybe coded incorrectly, which again, remember from our oracle presentation, we have 800,000 account lines. It's very easy to code something to the wrong fund. I will tell you, I don't believe we were part of that 191,000, because we went through our at-risk funding and the expenditures with a fine-tooth comb before the audit ever started. We looked specifically to make sure that everything that we were spending was in the KSD guidelines that were allowable. So I'm very confident that our spending in at-risk were qualified on the at-risk guidelines that we had. That said, even some of that $191,000, like for Chromebooks and a few of those other things, you could easily, at an alternative school, make an argument that that is an at-risk expenditure. There's a few items, again, like an athletic trainer, I think was one of the examples. Of course, that's probably a miscoding at some district. Some districts don't have the accounting resources to go through a fine-tooth comb like we were able to do. So I understand it. That would have been corrected through a journal entry. Also, remember that we are spending a lot more in at-risk services than we're receiving in funding. So that difference is coming from the general fund or the supplemental general fund. So again, some of those expenditures would have been pushed back into the general fund. So the legislative post-audit's conclusions were that at-risk funding is not being used to offer additional programs or services, the key word here being additional. The use of funds for teachers without assurance that the funding targets at-risk students or employs evidence-based practices and programs was questionable, at least according to legislative post-audit. And the other kind of target, if you will, was that KSD had not provided districts with clear or accurate guidance related to at-risk spending for their school districts. So we wanted to cover a few at-risk facts, as far as where Wichita is concerned. So for the 19-20 school year, we are estimating that we will have around 33,000 and change free lunch students, which will generate $86 million of at-risk funding. That includes our high-density at-risk. We are budgeted to spend $99.4 million in support of our at-risk students. So again, we will spend almost $14 million more than we receive in at-risk funding in support of those students. Partially because even though the free lunch population is 33,000, our at-risk students total more than 37,000, based on the criteria related to at-risk guidelines. So we are receiving funding for significantly less students than we have as far as qualifying for at-risk. We employ a lot of at-risk initiatives. You heard some of them earlier tonight, and you've heard of a lot of them through the course of several presentations, particularly related to our goals around our strategic plan. But class size reduction is a key component of what we do. Small group instruction, summer school, extended school year, credit recovery, homework hotline, dropout prevention, transition to work programs, behavior intervention teachers, alternative instructional institutions, alternative curriculum tutoring, learning centers. Our social workers and psychologists have some funding in these areas. Individual learning plans, interventions. We are focusing a lot of attention on at-risk students. Classroom reduction, ask any teacher if that's important, and the answer you're going to get is yes. Because trying to handle three out of every four students, as far as what they need, and they are considered at-risk, our teachers are employing evidence-based practices within the classroom setting. We'd actually approach at-risk fairly conservatively compared to other districts. We fund our K to V classroom teachers with at-risk dollars. We don't do specials, so our PE teachers are not funded with at-risk. Art is not funded with at-risk. Our core, language arts, math, and science teachers at the secondary level, we use at-risk funds for, but we don't do any of our electives with at-risk. So we are very targeted and methodical in our approach to which teacher salaries we believe qualify under the guidelines, even though the KSD guidelines don't specify that you have to do that. We chose to do that, because we thought that best aligned with what the intent of the statute was. We are attempting to build a very sustainable infrastructure with our at-risk funding to support classroom management and those classroom reduction initiatives, so teachers have more focused contact with students for the largest block of time they have with our students, which is during that school day. We don't pull our at-risk students out separately and single them out in some sort of similar case to lunch shaming, which we've talked about, and say, "Sorry, you at-risk students need to go out for additional services." That's not how we approach it. We approach it with a much more holistic, evidence-based teaching approach, and as you've seen tonight, we're having success. So our use of at-risk funds, over 90% is focused on classroom teacher salaries, with a smattering of other percentages for, again, Avid is a good example of an at-risk program, program coordinators for summer school. We probably did more summer school this past summer than we've ever done. Again, social emotional supports, behavior intervention teachers, all those things, and then just core intervention teachers, all of those are part of our overall at-risk strategy. And again, I think you see that tonight, those strategies are beginning to bear fruit. So kind of in summary of some of the high points related to these funds actually making a difference, we have assessment data that shows that our schools are starting to show some increases in those benchmarks that the legislature will be looking at. Not all schools, not every subject, but we are seeing those cases of improvement. Those recovery courses are turning into credits. We have 6,200 high school students attending tutoring on Wednesday nights. That's huge. And our graduation rate is showing the efforts of those initiatives. So we definitely, while we want to celebrate the fact that we've increased that 1.3%, we also want to use that to say, "We're doing what you've asked us to do, focusing the dollars, getting the outcomes." It is critically important that we maintain the use of at-risk dollars in our classrooms. It's $91 million primarily teacher salaries in this fund. It is virtually impossible for the general fund to take on that kind of volume of spending. I'm kind of speechless over what we might do if that ends up being the case. And it's not feasible to expect that we can put at-risk programming in place above and beyond, in an after-school setting or summer school setting, for that many students, and attempt to get that kind of outcome that we're seeing, based on what we're seeing in the classroom today. We just don't have, it would be more than $91 million over the course of a year to try to get all of these students above and beyond every single day than what we do in that seven hours that occurs. So our action plan related to at-risk is very similar to the one we have on the high-density, which is, we need to continue to meet with all the legislators to educate them on the importance of using at-risk funds in the classroom. We need to get this information again into as many hands as possible. That legislative post-audit, while I think it showed that the funds were being calculated correctly, so the districts are receiving the funds they're entitled to under the statute, their argument that the funds aren't being expended in a way to provide additional supports to at-risk students, I think we would argue otherwise, and our outcomes support that. We have a ways to go. We heard that earlier from Dr. Irving and Mr. Alvarez. We'll repeat it here. We're not where we want to be, but we are heading in the right direction. Cutting the funds at this point, or restricting them to such an extent that we have to then back up and start again, only puts our trajectory in the wrong direction. And I think we need to come out very strong on this topic, or we will find ourselves in a significant budget deficit, trying to cover $91 million of teacher salaries. That's 1,300 teachers. Any questions on that, before I go to the last topic I had tonight?
We do have a couple of questions. Stan?
So let me make sure I understand what the conflict is between the audit and at-risk funding. Does the legislature want the funding to go to additional programs, or do they disagree on hiring teachers to reduce class sizes?
I think there's components of both.
Okay.
They don't believe that there's strong enough evidence that shows that classroom reduction will get you those outcomes that you're seeking on at-risk students. And I think we would agree that at least some of the literature is a little bit mixed. But what we do know from, again, our experts, this group here, as opposed to legislative post-audit, is that in a classroom of, say, 18 to 20, versus a classroom of 25 to 30, you are going to be able to build those relationships, you're going to be able to get to know those students, you're going to create those individual plans where students can achieve success in a smaller class size than you will in those larger class sizes. The other piece is that they were very focused on the fact that the court said that these at-risk funds need to be that above and beyond. And we agree, that's why we've spent a lot of focus on summer programming and after-school programming. But we know the most hours we'll get with a student is that seven-hour day. Again, we know we have attendance challenges, we have attendance challenges in the summer. We have some programs that we start summer school, and they're not attended as well as we'd like. We have more openings for those students than we have students that are willing to come and fill them. So our best option is to get as much focus during the school year, in that core part of that day, as we can, which is why we really focused on those core classroom teachers.
Ron?
I just want to thank all the teachers and people who are involved with at-risk, all these programs, After School Rec, tutoring, all the people that really go out there and make a difference in all our students' lives. And also, so at-risk, what are some other factors besides free and reduced? Are the legislators, are they going by the same thing, the same criteria that we use to define at-risk?
So there are a number of at-risk factors. Certainly poverty, single parents, incarcerated parent, all of those factors can come into play. So that's why, even though we receive funding based on a free lunch, which is basically a poverty measure, there are six or seven other criteria that can qualify a student for at-risk services. And so as we're tracking our at-risk population, all of those factors are taken into play, and that's where we are able to share that 37,000 figures for students who could qualify for services versus what we receive for funding.
Okay. Thank you.
You handed us this one-pager. Is this what we've been using with our legislators?
Yes. That was developed just over the break, or right before we went on break, because we actually met with some legislators over the break to try to, again, get some momentum before the session started. The front, well, there's one side that has this circle graph. This shows you our budgeted at-risk funding and planned expenditures for the fiscal year 20-year, showing the portion that's just regular at-risk, the high-density at-risk, and then what we're going to spend above and beyond that for the students. And then you have three other numbers. One is that free lunch count, the bottom number, the 33,000. The middle number is the number of at-risk students. And then just for comparison purposes, we gave our readers the number of free and reduced students, which is a 76%, which is actually more than our at-risk identified, just to show that even though we have a number of free lunch, we have a pretty good gap, and reduced students can sometimes still have those same needs. So it's just, again, so that the board has, and any of our readers have enough information to kind of look at what is actually going on in our district, and what are the populations that we are trying to serve, and the differences between that funding level versus truly qualified as at-risk, and then free and reduced. And then you have a list of those same at-risk initiatives on the bottom of that page. And then as you flip to the back, you see one of those points that I had in the PowerPoint, three out of every four students in Wichita is considered at-risk. We're building that infrastructure with our smaller class size to build those relationships, to get those outcomes. And then we're seeing those results because of this funding. So again, to then come in behind and either not fund, or limit what we can spend the funds on, potentially put some of those gains at risk. We also put, again, just for, so that people have some conception of what that amount of money means to us, we put it in terms of teachers, because again, for legislators, that's where we get the biggest impact, is when they understand, "When you look at funding and you look to reduce ours, here's the potential impact to the classroom, which you tell us you don't want us to touch." So if we lose $15 million of at-risk funding, that's a potential loss of 214 teachers. If you impact our ability to use at-risk dollars to fund teacher salaries, that's 1,300 staff members. So these are huge impacts to the district and its ability to do what we've been charged to do, which is turn the trajectory for our students to a positive outcome, which again, we're seeing.
I did read the full report that came out on this, and it seemed to be leaning pretty strongly in the direction of class size doesn't matter, and so is this the right way to use teachers? Is that what you're hearing from the legislators?
I think that's our concern, as this topic comes up during the legislative session, that that's the piece they're going to pick up on, which is legislative post-audit, based on their research, does not feel that that teacher component is an at-risk factor that will help our at-risk students, and it isn't above and beyond. So it's kind of two-part. It doesn't accomplish what you want it to accomplish, because there's not enough evidence that shows it makes a difference, and two, it's not additional services. But again, we don't want to pull out our students and single them out as at-risk. That's not what we're after. We're after to serve that student where they're at, and progress them to where they need to be.
With three out of four students as at-risk, we literally would leave three or four students in the classroom and take everybody out if we did that.
Right. Again, if a classroom of 20, five would be left in the classroom, 15 would be...
Well, and we have schools where that's even higher.
Right. Yes.
Last question. I know you're working with the legislators now, and I think this is an excellent little one-pager that we can use with our public and with everybody else. How are we distributing this beyond the legislative people?
At this point, as we stated, it was just completed, and we finalized it and all said, nodded off on it, right before the holidays. So we have not decided at this point, and we would be open for suggestions of what you think we ought to do with it. But at this time, we are actually just taking this document as we go to talk to our legislators. That's the first thing that we're doing with it. And at some point, we would like to maybe post it on our website underneath our financial piece, so that people have the opportunity to look at that. We've also had conversations with our UTW, so that they understand what's going on with this as well. And so if you have other suggestions of what you would like us to do, we're open.
Well, I think using social media is an excellent idea, but I would let your staff determine that. It just scares me to death to think that we could lose $99.3 million, because there is no way. I mean, I went through way too many years of cutting the budget every year, and this would be a huge, huge, huge cut.
The high-density at-risk, for sure, would be a cut in funding. We would not receive it if they don't change the sunset. The $91 million total at-risk might not be a total cut, but it would be, you have to spend it this way. And if we have to spend it this way for additional services, we'd have to figure out a way then to support the classroom teachers that we're funding with that with different funds. And we don't have $91 million of different funds.
We don't have $9 million of different funds. Okay, Julie?
I think you just clarified what my question was. I wanted to make sure that I understood that the way the statute reads now, we would lose the 14.3 million.
That's correct.
There has to be a change made for us to not lose those funds.
Correct. And we're hoping it's a, that issue is fairly quick, because the money is in the budget, and we'd like it, we're hoping it was a technical error. And that's kind of been our approach so far, which is... And that's kind of been our approach so far, which is surely with the completion of the Gannon case, it was not the intent to then turn around and reduce funding by $51 million across the state, especially with that five-year language in the statute as far as accountability. So we're hoping that's quick and fairly easy, but again, it could be...
And we're thinking, maybe somebody has it on their radar to address it.
It could become an issue for someone to, again, point to the other piece of at-risk, which is those Legislative Post Audit results, and say, well, they're not spending it appropriately, so therefore, why should we up the date?
And we have been on the road, having lots of conversations with lots of legislators, all the way up to the lieutenant governor. So we've had lots of conversations about this. And at one point, they were not aware that this was even an issue until we began to talk about it, and now it is a buzz. So there are a lot of legislators that are aware of this, and we're hoping that they make the right decision.
I hope they do. You have some more of your report.
Just had two last slides for you tonight. We talked at the close of last year's budget preparation about the accountability reports that were going to be coming out from KSD, and we were kind of waiting on instruction for what those would look like and what work we would have to be involved in in order to get those up and running. So KSD released accountability reports to us just this past week whereby we didn't do any of the preparation. So this is all data that is being pulled from data that already exists at KSD. They've just pulled it together in kind of a summarized format. So they're combining assessment data over the past few years with some spending data on a kind of a two-pager. And they have a, kind of a performance-related reports, and then they have some financial reports. The financial reports are simply a version of the budget at a glance that's in the budget book. So those are pretty straightforward. But you can actually go onto our website now, and at the very bottom, there's a ribbon, and you'll see the Speak Up notification and our budget reports. In the middle, there is a little icon right here, and it says accountability reports. When you click on that, it takes you to a link on the Kansas State Department of Education's webpage. And you have performance accountability reports and financial accountability reports. If, as people go out and start to look at these, and I didn't include any screenshots here because they're rather full, then certainly you can come back to us with some questions as far as where that data came from. We're going to present some information to principals as far as how to interpret those and what they mean and where the data came from. But all that data that's on there exists already in KSD Data Central. So it's not, they didn't create any new information. They just kind of pulled pieces and parts and put it together in these accountability reports.
So would the building report cards be in that?
These are different. So they're new, and you can't link to them through this path, but it's the same place where the building reports live. And that's all I have for you tonight. This link is on our main page, and then every school page under the district quick links, you can also get to the accountability reports. Because these accountability reports have a district-level page, and then each school has its own report. So just kind of recap for our audience. At-risk funding and other increased funding, they are beginning to show results, including a 1.3% increase in the district's graduation rate. The district has the potential to lose around $15 million for fiscal year '21 if the sunset is not removed from the high-density at-risk statute before the end of the legislative session. Legislative post-audit on at-risk funds challenges the use of at-risk funds to support the classroom. Our district spends 90% or $91 million on classroom teachers using these funds. Besides believing firmly in smaller class sizes to support at-risk students, the loss of the ability to fund teachers with at-risk funds would be devastating to the district and its students, particularly in light of the success we've had to date with funding restored. And the accountability reports are now available via a link on the district's website. And that is it for tonight.
Very good. Thank you very much.